Even if it was online, but we had one and we could read aloud the first question and the choices, and then they would answer, and then you could read aloud the next question, and they can answer. Because many of these kids, I would say, my kids were reading first and second grade level, they couldn't read these questions. And so I don't know that what we're getting from the survey is really valid.
Okay, cool. Our three expected annual measurable outcomes again, let's see, the red, you did not mean, has the blue we hit. So I'm going to show you some data right now from the parent involvement. We have three different types of parent involvement, three categories, engagement, involvement in education, engagement, we counted as under school by council, proposition 227, ELAC meetings, and ELAC meetings, Title I parent involvement meetings, and then under category, under involvement, all those schools that had carnivals, PTO meetings, also, I said carnival already, but let's see, I have, under that, I have parent conferences, back to school, cafecito, PTA, PTO meetings, and then under the category, under education, all the parent educational programs that they provided, such as triple P, Jump into English, different Rosetta Stone programs, anything under education. So the district, as you can see, we had under all those 35 events, and then the school site, 606 events, and that equals to 641 of all the opportunities that we provided for parents. So you can see also the percentages. So lots done, but also lots to do for next four years. Our parent information, and we took all that information from some principals who in turn submitted parent logs of all their events that they had, questions?
You know what would be really helpful, too, is to get, to find out how many parents attended. I mean, those are all the events, but what percentage of your total parent group were actually involved in the engagement activities or took advantage of those things? Because that would be helpful in helping us understand how many parents are actually... My feeling is probably a small number of, you know, the same parents that go to everything. Just because...
Right, I think you're correct, because we did ask for participation, and sometimes, depending on the school site, they have mandatory participating, and sometimes they had very little participation. It was hard for them to get to come, for example, for ELAC meetings. Some school sites couldn't get their ELAC together, and then, you know, they have incentives, they raffle books, they raffle things for the parents, oh, they have passports. So that also brings parent participation. But they, the schools are trying, principals are trying very hard to bring the parents to get involved in their schools. And especially, they have a lot of success when they have parent carnivals, or carnivals at the schools, nap, literacy nights, et cetera. Those bring a lot of the parents to the schools. When it comes to, like I said, like ELAC meetings, under the engagement, it's sometimes it's a little more difficult for them to come.
Well, and one of the areas that you, you know, that we didn't meet, science will conduct a needs assessment at the beginning. Maybe if they did more of that, I mean, if that was happening, maybe more parents would then participate, too, if it was something they really wanted.
Right, because the parents were actually...
Interested, they would ask for it, so, yeah.
You know, this was, that I decided we would have cultural events, and we would build a house.
Right.
The house was rocky with parents. And I don't know where this has gone in this district, but if you want parents involved, have a posada, have some kind of social celebration, and then you can move on from it.
Right, and actually, some school sites do have those events, and you notice that they bring, you know, 300, 400 parents to those events. You're absolutely right, and as a principal, I remember having events, and if I had the kids perform, then that brings the parents.
That it can offer.
Exactly, yes.
And I think we have been at several events, and Los Padres, I'm sure there were 500 parents in the Don Juan multipurpose room, or in the posada, it was a holiday celebration, Sherwood Hall, we had the Christmas celebration, and there were hundreds, and I don't know how many hundreds of parents. I think what I'm hearing from a trustee-ish is looking for a mechanism or structure or something where you can have a count of parents. And I'm, one of my surprises was many times, were those teachers in the room, if I went to your classrooms or back to school in open house, I signed your sign-in sheets, but there were so many classrooms that did not have sign-in sheets. I don't know for the schools that have their displays, you know, their showcases, I don't know how you capture that, you know, for, you know, the amount of parents that come. But I do know one, I hate to just keep using the same example, but Sherwood had a passport system, and so parents build up the passport with the amount of events that they attended, and after they had, you know, completed, you know, all of these events, I don't know, it was up to 10, I don't know, I can't remember what it was, but their prizes are given to the parents. So there's, there's different structures and ways to engage that. But one thing that I don't see consistently is even something as simple as parent sign-in sheets in the classrooms when we do, or in the events. So, I don't know, we'll have to explore how we can actually get a count, because I only know when the room's packed down, there's no more chairs, how much I look and see what it can hold, and that's how we kind of gauge how many people are there. So we'll work on that.
Me, too.
Okay, so that's the presentation that kind of wraps up for you our expected annual measurable outcomes, our report on that to complete the 15th, 16th annual review. But what you have for you for your action is the approval of the 16th, 17th Local Control Accountability Plan.
Yeah, it says 16, that was a time vote, right?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it gets three years. It is, it is.
I thought it was three years.
It begins next, Gloria.
Questions from the board under there? Does that motion to approve?
I saw the blue.
Okay, second.
My second.
Yeah, the motion is second to approve the 2016, 2019 Local Control Accountability Plan, and any update, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Five zero, motion passes.
Do it again.
It's an update, I think, for what. However, we probably have a little bit more coming up, because the next few items on for action are some contracts that were included and funded through the Local Control Accountability Plan. The first one that we have is with Harmony at Home to provide our Sticks and Stones Council Services, and we do have some members, some representatives from Harmony at Home who are going to briefly explain to you a bit about the program.
Good evening, board, and I hope, thank you, everybody, for staying with us for this late agenda item, and thank you for inviting us. I'm Julianne Levy, I'm the founder and executive director for Harmony at Home, and, let's see, ah, there you go. So we're so pleased with our ongoing collaboration with the Salinas City Elementary School District. This collaboration has been going on for a number of years, and our involvement continues to grow and expand, and it truly is helping Harmony at Home to achieve our mission, which is to end the cycles of violence and abuse by empowering children and young adults with the knowledge and skills to lead, to lead healthy and productive lives. So thank you for your ongoing collaboration.
On the right side of the circle is your chair.
So you're on board.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so, thank you. Okay, so we're going to present first our Sticks and Stones school-based counseling program, and I am going to introduce you to our program coordinator to share with you Sticks and Stones, Michelle Feliciano.
Good evening, board, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. This is my first attendance at a board event, so thank you for having us. I'm learning a lot, just being part of this process, and thank you. And as Julianne said, my name is Michelle Feliciano, I'm currently the program coordinator for our Sticks and Stones program. And just to share with you some highlights of the program, the program is specifically designed to work with children who have been exposed to trauma and violence within our community. It's also focused on a 10-week curriculum, which means students will work in a group-based format, that typically has about three to five students in a group, and they will work together for 10 weeks. And the focus of the group is to help children process their trauma in group with their peers and with their clinician, and it will help them learn better and healthier ways to express their feelings. And also, the clinicians are able to link children and families to additional resources in our community. So once we get a student and has gone through the program, if they graduate the program, then the clinician can provide some services to the families for local, the local resources we have available. And some students will stay in the program for an additional 10 weeks, and it's not uncommon that we might see a student for an entire school year. And so this is a, this is our numbers, just kind of looking at it, so we've served a total of 2,158 children during the years 2012 to 2016. And if you look at this 2015, 2016, this previous school year, it's just about 600 children served, and then the green will give you an idea of how many children have improved, and it's a little over half. And we generate these numbers from forms that we fill, we have our teachers fill out at the beginning of sessions with students, and then at the end. So we call it a matrix form, it's our way to evaluate the program and how, and if the child has improved or not improved. And some of the goals for our upcoming school year, I've been extremely excited, because I've been sharing it with Julianne, is I've been working really hard on improvement and how we can increase the program and its efficiency in the schools. And one of those goals will be to increase parent support and outreach. Also, we plan to start our groups earlier in September, so that we can see more students earlier on, and have more cycles of groups happening. And also, one of our main goals is to improve communication between counselors, teachers, and principals, which always seems to be a high, a large challenge for us, however, we are going to try to actually improve that area of our work at the schools.
Okay, thank you. So you have before you a contract for your approval with Harmony at Home to provide two days of counseling services at all of our district schools with a half a day per week at Veranda Dooler Merin Academy at this point in time, since it will only have five classrooms.
Any questions? Any questions from the public?
You have measurable outcome, am I right? In other words, if we invest our money, we're going to see some, some type of improvement that can be measured.
Okay, so how our, our matrix evaluation works that Michelle was talking about is, it is, it's a form that the referring party, it can be a teacher, a parent, an administrator, will look at where the child is behaviorally, academically, just socially and emotionally, and they'll evaluate that child when he or she enters the program. And then, as Michelle mentioned, it could be 10 weeks, it could be, you know, 20 weeks, or the whole school year, but at the end of the school year, or at the end of the completion, when the child's graduated, that same person would look at the same report and evaluate where the child is. So we can, we can ascertain that that child improved behaviorally, academically, socially, and emotionally, or stayed the same, or decreased. The challenge with these reports is that we have to consider external factors as well. Many of the children, all of the children that refer to Sticks and Stones have been severely traumatized in one way or another. And for many of our kids that refer to the program, that trauma is ongoing. Some of them, it could be the loss of a significant person, we work with them, they move through it, they have good support at home, and they're okay. For many of our kids, they go home daily to abuse, alcoholism, drug abuse, and such, and so the numbers are challenging to grasp sometimes in terms of, you know, how, how it is helping overall, because it's so individualized for these children. We've seen tremendous fluctuation over the years, we've seen as high as 85% some years, we've seen, and this is one of our lower years, 52%, violence has been tremendous in Salinas, it impacts our children, that's an external factor. So we have outcomes, and they're challenging for us.
See, my fear is this, we invest so much money in anti-gang, anti-violence programs, and after there's a sunset, let's say, on any grant that we receive, sometimes in the millions, the crime and the gang situation is worse. And I just want to throw that out there, but I've had experience with Sticks and Stones, I thought it was an outstanding program, but like I said, there's always that concern, you know, of investing an amount and, you know, being able to see the outcomes.
Of course, absolutely, and what we want you all to just hold dear in your hearts is that we're planting seeds in these children, and we're helping them to learn alternatives to violence, so maybe it's prevention we're doing, truly. So that maybe down the road, when they have children, things will be different, you can't always see these outcomes, you know, in the immediacy.
I'm Dr. Lara Sherwood, I'm a teacher. Equal is not always equitable. Sherwood has a large population, and other schools have a smaller population, and I know this isn't going to affect this budget, but in the future, just to keep in mind, because we do have more students, an extra day would be beneficial for our site, equal is not always equitable. So that may not affect this one, but in the future, for our larger schools, an extra day, half a day, something will be great. Thank you.
Actually, this year, we do have two schools that are going to be over 800, Los Padres and Sherwood, and we have offered to the schools an extra day of counseling. So those schools, instead of two, will have three days. It's part of that target.
Again, does that motion approve this?
I'd like to make a motion to...
I'll second that.
Do we have a motion to second to approve the contract with Harmony at Home for Sticks and Stones Counseling Services? All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Good evening, board, I'm here with another contract with Harmony at Home. We've already heard a little bit this evening about the Olveasbullying Prevention Program. We're looking to expand next year in a very big way. We have had very positive results at the four schools that we've had involved with Olveas. Los Padres and Sherwood have gone through their training, now we have Mola Vista and Roosevelt School that will be entering here, and we'll be including little Veranda Dooler. We will add six more next year with this contract. I do believe we have Ms. Pinky Lizer, who is going to explain a little bit about the program.
Good evening, board, and good evening, public attendees, thank you so much for being here this evening, it's a delight to be able to speak to you about the Olveasbullying Prevention Program. So, Mr. Bellender, would you, thank you. So the goals of the Olveasbullying Prevention Program are to reduce existing bullying problems, incidents, to prevent future occurrences, and to improve peer relationships. And what I've noticed at the four schools, what we've implemented, as with so many other programs that we teach our kids, it benefits the growth, too. So when we teach the kids how to get along better with each other, one of the things that I hear from the teachers is, wow, should we have the anti-bullying rules in the staff lounge, too? That would be so great. And I really applaud them for thinking that way. When we bring it to the kids, they bring it back to us, they hold us accountable. What's new in bullying prevention, Ms. Sanders has already told you, in our first year, we piloted in one school, and then in the second year, we doubled our numbers, we added one more school. So we were at two, the following year, we added two more schools, so we doubled our numbers again. And this year, the exciting news is, in the fall, we have consensus from six new schools. The staff and the faculty, and I applaud the administrators and the faculty for working together to come to consensus to bring Olveas to six additional schools, Salinas City Elementary School District. We are now going to be in 10 schools, providing you both a permit. Thanks, Ms. Bellender, I appreciate it. Successes I'd like to share with you, you can read, you are literate people, you can read what's on that slide. I have lots more that I would love to share with you. One of the things that Mr. Ramos mentioned is that students are less afraid. Our Olveasbullying Prevention Questionnaire that we administer once a year, in the initial year that Sherwood administered that survey, I had 399 students participate in that survey. We only surveyed third, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, because the Olveas program tells us that those who are K through 2 don't have the literacy skills to participate in this questionnaire yet. But of the third, fourth, fifth, and sixth graders who were enrolled at the school, the number who participated were 399. Students who reported that they were afraid of being bullied in that first year, 48.1% said, I'm afraid it might happen to me at school. The second year of implementation, or after the first year of implementation, 41.3 students said, so it had gone down by 7%. And in the following year, this past year, the number had gone from 48.1% down to 41.3% down to 40.1%. Students say, I am afraid of being bullied. So we're seeing significant improvement. And if it's helpful to you, perhaps bullying questionnaire data can be added to CHICS data, if it's helpful to you, I don't know, in addressing climate and culture issues. If so, I would be more than happy to help you, share with you, data that we get with permission of the schools, that belongs to them, each school is in possession of that. And one of the other things that I heard just this year, just before school got out, this, this quote from a teacher was shared with me last year, one of the teachers came to me this year during lunch in the staff lounge and said, Ms. Pink, one of my students asked me today, can we have an extra class meeting this week? There's something I really need to ask for help about. This student disclosed that there was domestic violence going on in the home, and wanted to ask her classmates from her class meeting, do you guys have any suggestions to offer? Isn't that amazing? Not that the students should be held responsible for holding that kind of information, but a student had developed enough sense of safety and security in that classroom setting with those class meetings on a weekly basis, that she asked her teacher, may I ask the class for some input?
Questions from the board? Questions from the public?
I just wanted to say that, that Olveas is adding, is being added to these schools because they wanted it, they asked for it. I know, Lori, you asked who was interested in it, and one school came forward, and another one, and we only had, I forgot how many slots, and we begged you to add additional slots on there. And so we were very grateful, number one, that you were able to accommodate all the schools who wanted to participate in here, and they're simply wanting, I'm thinking, wanting to participate because they've heard of the success that the other schools have had with Olveas. And we also realize the challenging environments that we serve, so.
Just to follow up with that, we did have, all of our sites had students take a survey, and they, then Pinky went back to the sites and presented to staff what students had to say. And we conducted a vote of all staffs. We had one site that was unanimous, the certificated staff. All certificated staff voted that they wanted to, our threshold, our minimum, was 80% of the staff. And we had six schools with 80%, or between 80 to 100% that staff wanted to contribute.
Any other questions, comments? Does that motion approve?
I move to approve this contract with Harmony at Home for Olveasbullying.
So second. So there's a motion, a second, to approve the Harmony at Home contract for Olveasbullying Prevention Program, all in favor, say aye. All opposed? Five zero, motion carries.
Thank you very, very much.
I'll be pleased to meet you.
Hello again, I am here with a contract, again, an agreement between the Hardnell Foundation and Salinas City Elementary School District to provide basically three rotations of Saturday, eight-week-long Saturday academies with the K through 12 STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics program offered by NASA SEMA. This will actually, this summer, we are impacting 300 students, third through sixth. This will impact 2,275 students, including dinner through sixth. And so three or four schools, every eight weeks, will be having this on their own sites. And the NASA will provide the curriculum, the training, they hope to be able to contact with our teachers, just as we are now, our teachers are teaching our summer school at Hardnell. The district, in addition to providing funding with the contract, will provide a teacher in charge that's from our own staff, and a health aide at all the sites where they're open to make sure that all students' medical needs are taken care of.
So the teacher in charge positions that were on that contract will be our...
Oh, they're, no, the regular classroom teachers, the teacher in charge is not part of this contract, that is something we will do in addition to on top of this, but the classroom teachers for the seven classrooms at each site for eight weeks, we will advertise as part of the agreement is that we assist them in recruiting teachers, but it's through their payroll, not through ours.
So the full-time program coordinators, that's the ones that are, those are their...
Their employees, they will have two full-time program coordinators who will be responsible for having all the materials to the sites. This is, there's lots of hands-on with this program, and so the kids are making things every class time, multiple things. And so the foundation will rent their storage units, and they will have our materials, and these two program coordinators will be responsible for that, they also do attendance and...
Any other questions, comments? The public? Do we have a motion to approve?
So vote.
Okay, second.
I second.
So there's a motion and a second to approve the Saturday STEM Academy agreement with the Hardnell College Foundation. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you. Well, the under curriculum number five, the final contract I bring before you, is an agreement for services with YOSAB, the Youth Orchestra... for services with YOSAL, the Youth Orchestra of Salinas, that is affiliated with El Sistema USA. We've been very fortunate that for the past six years, we've had students participate in this program at no cost. For us to, for our students' participation to continue, we need to make a contribution to YOSAL for some of the fees. Currently, they have music programs for what's their juniors, which are K through, Kinder in first grade. Those are located in Sherwood, Los Padres, and Cameron. And then, there's a pre-orchester program for second through sixth, and an orchestra program also for second and sixth, but of course, that tends to be heavy on the upper grade students. The juniors meet twice a week, but the pre-orchester and orchestra students, it's basically from 3 o'clock to 6 o'clock, five days a week after school. They not only provide the instrumental music instruction, there's also homework and tutoring. It is definitely musical enrichment, it's also character education, being part of, as you can imagine, being part of an orchestra is being an integral part of making something happen. And that's a very valuable experience for our students. So, we would like to continue with this program, and we have hopes to be able to expand it just in next year alone. Currently, we have 54 students that are participating, well, we have a total of 179 that are participating, 54 of them are in one of the orchestras. Next year, we hope to increase that to 95 students. They do provide transportation, and you might have seen a white bus with the brightly colored YOSAL logo on it. They are looking next year at moving their classes to one of the new CSU MB Salinas Satellite campuses. One is, of course, the old Steinbeck Center, and one is at the Heel College at Alvin and North Main. They're not sure where they're located. This contract will include transporting students.
Are those additional sites, or are those going to, then they won't no longer be using one of those classrooms, is that?
That's a proposal, they have the board, the YOSAL board has not voted, but what's been explained to me, understandably, using school sites, the schools' needs for their own facilities change, and so, they might be moved around and shuffled, and they really feel a need to establish their own consistent facilities, and they do have a partnership with CSU MB, and they have space.
They might take the place of the, the location at our site. They have huge instruments that require a lot of storage.
Yeah.
Any other? So, this is at $100,000 per academic year?
Yes, for, for this next year, it's only a one-year contract.
You know, Lori has like different numbers, 54, 95, 115, as far as students, students being served. Now...
We also have...
What would it be?
Well, the...
Is there a guarantee that we're going to have the most amount of students served?
Yes, currently, we have currently in this year 179 students that are participating, 54 of them happen to be in the orchestras. Next year, and I did not put the number, they estimate, they anticipate 215 students, but what they really want to see is increasing, not so much the Kinder in first grade vocal music, but really increasing orchestra, pre-orchestra, which is five days a week, 20 hours a day with our second through sixth grade, and so, that will increase next year. That's where the, the bulk of the increase is.
Is that it? Okay, do I have a motion to approve this contract?
I move to approve the contract for services with YOSAL.
I second.
Okay, so, there's a motion on the floor to approve contract for services with El Sistema USA, Salinas for YOSAL. All in favor, say aye. All opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a little break. 8:57, let's be back by 9:5.